Good evening. Tonight, I am the acting chair of the Shrewsbury Planning Board because Julie is a little under the weather, however, participating virtually right now. So I would call the meeting to order. This is the November fourth, uh, November fifth, excuse me, uh, November sixth, November sixth, November sixth, twenty twenty five, Meeting of the Shrewsbury Planning Board. Okay, first order of business would be our meeting minutes from Thursday, October second. Has everybody on the board had an opportunity to review the minutes?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. At this point, I would accept a motion to approve the minutes as written.
I move that we approve the minutes as written of October two, twenty twenty five meeting.
Second?
All in favor because, but because Julie is participating virtually, we're going to have a roll call. Julie, you in favor?
Yes.
Perna?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. And I'm in favor as well. Thank you. Okay, uh, review and sign bills. We have none?
None this evening.
It's kind of funny, when I printed out my packet, I had bills. Printed out something wrong? All right, okay, so we have no bills, that's okay. Okay, uh, any board member comments? Julie?
Not, not this evening, thank you.
Thank you.
No comments.
Perna?
No comments.
Tim?
No comments.
And I have no comments as well. Okay, staff report. Chris?
Thank you, I just wanted to give a brief announcement, um, we have some flyers that are available, um, at the sign-in table, um, and we've also been, uh, posting on, online, but in coordination with the Shrewsbury Development Corporation, um, the town will be holding, a community meeting, uh, related to economic development along our corridors. Um, we're evaluating, uh, the plan for the key transportation corridors to identify opportunities for new development, increasing jobs and growing the tax base. That will be held at the senior center on Wednesday, November nineteenth. Uh, there will be two sessions available, both identical, um, to allow for, uh, people to participate. Um, the first session will be four thirty to six P M. The second section, session will be six thirty to eight P M. Uh, we also have a survey available, um, for those, uh, whether you can make it or not, uh, that we would ask for you to participate in. And so, again, that will be online and there's some materials available this evening for those in attendance. You can also reach out to, uh, the planning department at any time and happy to get that information to you and, uh, looking forward to that, uh, discussion.
Okay, wonderful, I hope everybody, uh, tries to attend on November nineteenth. Uh, next, uh, I'd like to start the meetings and hearings and the first hearing up is a proposed modification de minimis change request for four forty Hartford Turnpike, which I have to recuse myself, so I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Fitzgerald.
Good evening.
Good evening. Good evening, my name is Gene Sullivan, I'm, uh, the engineer who did all the civil designs for the property, I'm also the general contractor for the building over fourteen, uh, four forty Hartford Turnpike. I'm here representing, uh, Shrewsbury Property, uh, Shrewsbury Land Property Owner, uh, the owner of the, uh, property over there. We have completed construction over there and actually have a temporary C O as of last week, uh, and physique instrument, our tenant has moved into the building and started occupying the building, so, uh, we're very happy about that and they're very happy to be here and, uh, opening their, their business here in Shrewsbury. I'm here tonight to just discuss a couple of changes from the approved site plan that we had, uh, previously submitted and had approved by the planning board, um, to get them as a matter of record to, uh, modified plan. The first changes, uh, of note, I don't know if Chris you can pull that exhibit up, I kind of gave you a key plan that goes along with my memo, uh, but there are a couple of, uh, locations mostly along Route twenty and, uh, the rear of our, the side yard of our property, which is, uh, budding what used to be yellow freight. Um, we had originally shown that as grass slopes, uh, but in reality, they turned out to be too steep to be grass. Um, there's some vegetation along the yellow freight property line that wasn't stable, uh, if we were to just, uh, handle that as a lawn area, so we riprap that area. The other purpose of using riprap there frankly was there was a lot more ledge than we expected, uh, and instead of trucking the material offsite, we're able to use it on the property. Secondly, there's a retaining wall that's, uh, indicated as number two on the key plan, uh, along Route twenty, um, there was a lot more ledge along Route twenty than we expected, um, and there's a, a high pressure gas main out in Route twenty, about five feet off our property line, which was not known about, uh, prior to construction and during the approval process, um, and we decided to change the shape of that retaining wall and pull it more away from Route twenty and in towards our parking lot, uh, to just, uh, be safer and stop blasting. Um, it resulted in a, a loss of a little bit of pavement, but otherwise it didn't have much impact, but it is different than our original designs. Uh, number three was an item we discussed with the fire department, uh, there is a fire lane that goes around the, uh, back of the property to provide access for the fire department. Our original design called for grass pavers out there. We found, uh, that porous pavements are more suitable, uh, material out there on other projects, grass pavers are hard to maintain, first they're hard to grow and develop and then hard to maintain and plow over time, uh, and the fire department was thrilled to turn that into porous pavement. In terms of drainage, it's a wash in terms of how the wa, the water will be absorbed there. Number four was an item that, uh, we discussed when Chris and I walked on the property, uh, for a site walk, um, there's, uh, an area towards the rear of our property that faces the neighboring, uh, residents, I don't recall the name of the cul-de-sac over there, um, but there was an area that was kind of open, uh, so we earned planted some abrevites to provide some screening up there at the top of our retaining wall so they'd have a little less visual impact out there, so, uh, we were happy to do that. And then number five was up in the very back corner of the property, it calls for some plantings up there and it's, there's no reason for planting, it's a wooded area. Um, it's a very, uh, dense forest there and there's a really good buffer that already exists between us and the neighbors behind us, and actually the neighbors are more, we're number four as versus number five, number five's really all wooded back there, so, uh, it was a little different than our landscape plan, so we just wanted to make note of it.
Okay.
So, those are the changes we came up with and, uh, happy to answer any questions you have.
Thank you, Mr. Sullivan. Any, uh, board member questions or comments? Perna?
Just a quick question, the porous pavement you mentioned, is that, uh, kind of cement material or?
It looks like pavement, but it looks like you really did a lousy job and there's a lot of holes in it. So it's, it's, it, uh, it's designed to let the water go through and, and below it, we have a, a three-foot deep bed of stone and sand to absorb the, the rainwater or the runoff, so, uh, we use it quite a bit, and actually, the darker port of, portion of our parking lot, uh, where the office people park is porous pavement, um, all of that, that area is, so it's the same, same detail we have over there.
And one more quick one, uh?
Certainly.
Uh, the number one where you pulled back the, um, area so that you don't damage any of the gas lines on Route twenty, did that co, still kind of allow you to have enough, um, driveway around?
Oh yeah, it, we had a lot, we have, the, the part where we changed the retain, so one didn't move in, that limit right there where the one is, that limit of pavement stayed the same, but it's really that very corner where that number two is that I, we brought the retaining in wall in like ten feet for, uh, the very corner, and we don't have loading over there, so it doesn't impact our circulation at all.
Okay, thank you.
Julie?
No, I have no, no comments, it all seems to make, um, good sense to me.
Okay. And I would agree after review, Mr. Sullivan, that, um, the modifications are a benefit and compliant with the approved plans, um, so I see this as a, as de minimis. Can I get a motion to approve the de minimis change request for four forty Hartford Turnpike and then we'll take a roll call vote?
Yeah, I, uh, I move that the proposed site modifications, uh, for, uh, four forty Hartford Turnpike, uh, be approved as the de minimis change request.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Julie, are you in favor?
Yes.
Perna?
Yes.
And yes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, next public hearing on our agenda is the, a common driveway for thirty-three and thirty-five Redland Road.
All right.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Could you just please introduce yourself and?
Yeah, my name is Mike Scott, I'm an engineer at Land Design Collaborative in Westboro, and I'm here on behalf of Mr. Mahultra, the owner of the property. If I can share my screen. If I can figure out how to do that. Screen, why you're not sharing? Don't want to let me share my screen. There we go. Okay. So what we're looking at here is the, um, existing condition survey that was prepared by, um, Jarvis Survey of Shrewsbury, and what you're seeing is Redland is at the, um, bottom of the page here. The property that Mr. Mahultra purchased is this piece, sorry, these two pieces, um, on the north side of Redland, adjacent to, um, Meadow Brook. There's an existing home on the site, this was built in the late eighteen hundreds, um, and there's a single driveway that comes into the property on the east side of the property. What Mr. Mahultra would like to do is demolish this home and build a second home. So what we're looking at now is the same view, but with a, uh, the aerial behind it so you can see the existing home, Redland is on the bottom, yellow is the entirety of the, the property. What Mr. Mahultra would like to do is put a property line here, allow the common driveway to come in from the same location as it is today and has been for a hundred plus years. Build a home in this location, build a home in this location. This property, the grade, or the elevation of the street, probably six, eight feet below the flatter portion where the home is, and because this is a perennial stream with a two-hundred-foot riverfront area, the intent is not to put any new impervious or any tree work on the west side of the site, which would mean more alteration within the riverfront, um, as well as a fairly steep driveway. So, our thought is, the plan is, uh, which we took to the Conservation Commission, is to effectively do this, that, as you can see here, the existing home would be removed, two new homes, this is a slightly wider paved driveway today, it's gravel, it's a little narrow, um, and then on the left side of the site here, the west side, there'd be restoration within a hundred feet of the river, the Conservation Commission approved this a week and a half ago, it meets the performance standards of the Well and Protection Regulations. So it's kind of a combination of, it's the better site distance location, it's an established location, it's the least environmentally invasive approach, it's the safest, flattest route into the site, it's established, um, so for those reasons, we feel it's appropriate, um, to allow us a common driveway. It's just two single-family homes, it's two lots, there would be two driveways, it's essentially the same amount of pavement if we had brought a driveway in on the left, the western lot, um, but again, from an environmental standpoint, this is the, the way to go. So, I'll, happy to provide a heck of a lot more detail or answer questions, um, go through the waivers that we requested, anything that the board would.
Maybe in the first instance, it would be a, a, and I defer to the rest of the board, maybe to address the waiver in the first instance. You're looking for a, a waiver, the peer review?
Yeah, we're looking for several waivers, actually, we asked originally that felt that there was no need for a, a peer review, primarily because it's been reviewed by, it's being reviewed by the Stormwater Group here in town and it's being, it's been reviewed by conservation. And the town engineering department took a look at it, so we feel like there was three reviews. That's the value of it.
You need my votes.
So the question is, do you need a fourth opinion? That the owner has to pay for. So that, that's, that's the thought.
Yeah, I, I guess, I guess I'd share with you my thoughts on that, and again, I'm just one vote, is that, I guess, the bad news is, I don't think we've ever waived a peer review for common driveway, but the good news is, I can't think we've ever denied a common driveway either. So take that for, for what it's worth. I don't think I'd be inclined to waive the peer review, but again, I'm just, I'm just one vote. And I, I guess, uh, I turn, Ms. Olson, do you have an opinion on this? Turn it over to you, Julie. We didn't cut her off when we shared this.
Sorry, no, I, I'm here, I just, I was on you.
Okay.
I, I, uh, Mr. Chair, I do understand your, your statement of wanting, you know, of not necessarily, um, waiving the peer review, and I, I do appreciate, uh, Mr. Scott's, um, statements that, um, it has been reviewed, uh, by multiple different, um, entities, um, through, through the town. I, I would tend to kind of err on the side of caution, um, very similar to the chair, of, you know, what our peer review is looking for is not necessarily what other, um, other reviews in the town are looking for from like a stormwater purp, purpose and whatnot. Um, so I, I tend to agree with you, Mr. Chair, um, in terms of maintaining that, that idea of peer review, but I'm welcome to continue the conversation with the rest of the board.
Remember, I'm just the temporary chair, Julie. Perna, do you have any thoughts?
Uh, I agree wi, with, uh, the chair and, uh, Ms. Holstrom, you know, on this, that especially with your, uh, experience being on the planning board for many years, and if you felt that in the past we haven't waived, I think it's a good cautious approach to go through that, and, um, the acting chair also mentioned the good news side of it that we haven't denied one of these, so, uh, but, but I think, uh, it's a good idea to have it peer reviewed, because the engineer is the one who has, uh, more expertise on this and, uh, hopefully, um, that will come out clean, you know? I, I, I support the peer review.
Tim?
I actually, um, agreed with the request for the waiver for the peer review after reviewing, uh, the material in Mr. Scott's letter, uh, dated October fifteenth, twenty twenty five, and the rest of the waivers.
If I may, could I just ask, have you ever had a common driveway for two single-family homes that you've peer reviewed, I guess, is that a common thing in town?
Usually it's three.
Three, okay.
I think, I think we've had it for two, I, I guess, Mr. Scott, my, my concern is, is the grade. I, I walk by that site just about every day, believe it or not, uh, till, till the point of terminus of Redland and Oak, uh, and I, and I looked at it this morning again, I was just concerned about the, the grade of, you know, I know, I know you're looking to use that common, the existing driveway is kind of like your template. But, I, 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 I thought, well, I, I don't think the grade can exceed eight percent at any point under our bylaw. I'm guessing existing conditions do exceed eight percent?
And we did flatten the upper end of it for that purpose, so it would be, it, the grade would be slightly modified on the, on the grading plan, there's a bit of a cut to reduce the grade. Coming in, so, but it, it was designed in accordance with your regs, but if it gets peer reviewed, it, it'll find that.
I'm sure it does, but you, I assume your client's going to sell these properties, they're not going to live there, and I, and I just feel a lot more comfort, I, as one member of the board, would feel a lot more comfortable if it was reviewed, um, by someone, you know, I, I don't think it's a bad project, I, I, I think, I, I look at that old house and I see it and I, I just assume you not bring down the, the site, I, I think a common driveway i, is a good way to approach it, but I, I'd like another set of eyes, I, I don't have a stamp, I'd like another set of eyes on the design of the common driveway.
Well, I certainly appreciate the feedback and especially Mr. Fitzgerald's comments. Do you want to go through the rest of the?
Yeah, let's go through the re, let's go through the rest of it, because I, I don't think it's something that, I, I think, I think it's something that, again, I'm just one vote, um, but I, I think it's something that you, you know, get the peer review done, come to the December fourth meeting, we could probably have a decision ready for you, because I don't see this as being controversial and I appreciate what you're trying to do.
Okay, yep, just trying to save some time and money.
Yeah, yeah, I get, I get it.
I'm not opposed to giving away engineering work, that's what.
No, no, it's like, yeah, engineers got to eat too, right?
I know I can't peer review it myself, but, um, okay, so there were some other waivers which we didn't initially ask for, I guess I felt that they were kind of obvious, but, you know, the process, so, um, there were, um, again, these were noted in the, in the staff comments, um, we did request a, um, a waiver from the traffic study, I think that's pretty self-explanatory, um, same thing with the phonometric plan, you have types of use, it's not going to generate any, you know, obnoxious lighting or unusual lighting for the area. In terms of the, I'm going to skip to number four for a second, same thing with the impact reports, it's two houses, there's two lots out there, they're assessed as two lots, you know, it seems like it's self-evident. In terms of easements and the formalization of the, the plan, uh, the lots, if the common driveway is approved, he'll file the necessary paperwork for a Form A and, and provide the easement documents, we'd be happy to provide all those documents at that time. If the waiver, if the, um, special permit's not granted, there'd be no need for all that, so again, this is just a deferral, there's another step. Coming back, coming back to the building, which is number three, so, sort of the same thing, it's, if the special permit's not granted, he doesn't want to design the home, so, again, they have to fit this box, the conservation's going to allow what's here, nothing more, so, if, if those waivers are, um, su, you know, suitable, we'd be very happy to do that.
Those all seem, again, okay to me, um, I don't know if anybody else has opinions on them, but, uh, but I assume that the A and R plan i, is going to be consistent with the conceptual A and R.
It is, yes, we have math on, in the plans that there is a, there's a, you know, conceptual plan with the math, I'm not a surveyor, we didn't have Mr. Jarvis do it for that reason, but yeah.
Okay. So as long as there aren't material changes, you know, that, that would probably be a condition of, of the special permit, there are no material changes, you know, of the, uh, conceptual A and R plan shown on sheet, whatever it is.
Mr. Chair?
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Ms. Holstrom.
Um, I was going to, um, see if it's possible, um, while the peer review is, is being conducted and perhaps before the, um, next, before the December meeting, um, just in terms of trying to kind of get all of these items out of the way for you, Mr. Scott, um, could we potentially look at, um, having the A and R come before planning board at, at the December meeting as well as finalizing this common driveway, so you're getting both of these kind of done at, at once?
Yeah, I can certainly find out if Mr. Jarvis can get it on the schedule that quickly, if so, then we could bring it into the next week, you know, two weeks. I know with the holidays and everything, it's going to get a little tight. What's your deadline for filing an A and R? Can you do, can't do it at the meeting, I assume, but?
So there is no deadline, um, we do need it, uh, at least forty-eight hours in advance to get it on the, uh, agenda.
Okay, well, we'll certainly strive for that.
I think that would just help in, help you in terms of kind of, um, keeping on your permitting timeline if you have one.
I, I don't think anything you've asked for in terms of the other waivers besides the peer review is controversial, so.
Understood, okay. Um, is there anything else I can answer or provide input on tonight, or, I know it's a public hearing?
I don't want to say.
Just, your sightlines are, are okay here, right? I know there's a curve, you know?
Yeah, it's, we, we measured it, I can provide that number if you need it, but it's more than sufficient, yeah.
Okay.
Again, that's one of the reasons we like that location.
It's better than coming off the frontage.
Yeah, yeah.
Like I said, I walked that, I've almost gotten it all over a few times. Okay, uh, do you want to run through any, any other aspect of the plan? I, I think we kind of cut you short on the waivers.
No, I think, again, it's, it's relatively, it's relatively straightforward, it's two homes, they're flat, they'll be hooked up to water and sewer, they'll both go out the right or east side to stay out of the riverfront area on the left side, um, again, the Conservation Commission approved it, so that was a positive. It does provide stormwater to the town standards, we're pulling out the hundred-plus-year-old septic system, hooking it up to sewer, so those are kind of the other added benefits, if you will.
Okay, any other board member comments?
No comments.
No.
Okay, with that, I would ask, anybody from the public have any comments? The thirty-three Redland Road. Seeing none, I would entertain a, a motion to continue the public hearing on the Redland Road Common Driveway Special Permit until Thursday, December fourth, twenty twenty five, at seven P M.
I move that we continue the proposed common driveway special permit, uh, at thirty-three, thirty-five Redland Road to, uh, December fourth, twenty twenty five meeting at seven P M.
Second?
All in favor? Ms. Holstrom?
Yes.
Perna?
Yes.
Tim?
Yes.
And I'm a yes.
All right, see you then. All right, take care.
Okay. Next on our agenda is the proposed mixed-use development site plan approval and special permit, uh, for three oh eight and three twelve Boston Turnpike. The applicant and its professionals, please come forward.
Good evening. Good evening, thank you, uh, to the temporary chair, and, um, sorry to see that the chair is under the weather a little bit, I hope you feel better. For the record, my name is Richard Ricker, I'm, I'm an attorney with law offices at eleven Maple Avenue, and, um, I'm here with, um, my clients, Hamid Hatami and Eman Abdeljbara, um, who are the, the principals of, um, Prestige Property Development LLC, who are the, uh, which is the proponent of, of this proposal. I understand that they were here and I, and I did watch the meeting, uh, on tape, uh, last month, uh, so this is their second, uh, appearance before you in this particular, uh, proposal. This, um, I would like to say, and I'd point out, it's a commercial business zone, uh, but we are, uh, looking to take This, I would like to say, I'd point out, it's a commercial business zone, but we are looking to take, for lack of a better way to say it, advantage of the Lakeway overlay in this proposal. The proposal that you saw last month is, I would suggest to you respectfully, entirely different than what we're showing you tonight. I think there was perhaps, whether it be naivete or whatever, some thought that the proposal, although it met technically the guidelines of the bylaw, didn't meet the spirit of the bylaw and so therefore probably needed some tweaking, to say the least. With that in mind, I would suggest this is a horizontal mixed-use development proposal. The the changes that we have made since they were last here have been addressed in many in the narrative that I think is in your packet. The, we reduced the residential unit number from forty-nine to forty. The the commercial space has been moved, the older buildings that they were using in the last meeting have been now removed and what we're suggesting is there would be a new commercial building here on this part of the site, thirty-seven hundred and fifty square feet. We're suggesting that it would likely be segmented into three segments for rentability purposes so that it's not one large user, but potentially three smaller users in line with what this really is, which is a smaller site and kind of at the outer end of the Lakeway District. The, so they would remove those older structures and not use those. And when they remove those older structures, they're removing one, an apartment that is on the second floor of the older structure. This proposal would have, would be complying with the height, so there would be no request to go over the thirty-five feet. The, there's been a traffic survey. I believe you have the traffic survey in your packets as well. As you can see, we've now developed it to remove two of the curb cuts, so there would now be one curb cut. So it's a reduction of two or three to one. Thereby, and the circulation within the site is better than it was before as well. I can ask John to address that. He did do the fire truck radius test, et cetera. But I think that this is overall a better design, both for internal circulation, for vehicular access, but also for the pedestrians that would likely be walking around the site from the apartments to retail and so forth. The there's been a change to the buffer. The buffers along this edge, the western edge, has been widened in order to allow for not just fencing, but also addition of agaveides and evergreens. They would come all the way down to the end of the site. We also would suggest to the neighbor down here at the number nineteen that we, if they wanted us to, we would extend the fencing to the end of his property line in order to keep, in order to keep it in order for it to match, basically, so you don't have two different fencing, two different fences. There also was fencing along the back of the property line. I understand early on, there was some discussion in terms of community impact and improvement, there was some discussion about maybe having some access for trails. That's been eliminated. So we've got fencing that goes around the whole side and the elimination was as a result of basically neighborhood input. So the the, let me see, what else did I? So I think that basically summarizes, John. Maybe you can point out.
Yeah, to add a little more detail into what Richard said originally, as Richard stated, they were maintaining the existing structure, which was, I think it was a hair salon, and then there was a garage that historically had a license for auto repair there. So that was at three oh eight. What we, and the access was on the easterly side in the original development plan. As Richard stated, this older commercial building will be razed and demolished. Now, that will act as the single point of access into the site. And where we have more width along this frontage, that's where the commercial building would be built. And in terms of square footages, the existing structure that's on the westerly portion, that's about seven hundred and fifty-six square feet. It was like an old house that had been transformed into some type of commercial use. With this new proposal on the easterly side, we can have a three thousand seven hundred and fifty square foot true commercial building. It would be modern, in keeping with other projects that have been approved within the Lakeway Overlay District. And we did provide an elevation plan of the residential building. As Richard said, originally, we had that with a gable roof. It was more in keeping with the Edgemere project down by Market Basket. This is more in line with other projects have been in the Lakeway District. We would make sure that the height of this would not exceed thirty-five feet, so that we would, we did have a request for a special permit for the height when it did have gable height roofs. This would stay at the thirty-five feet, again, which would keep the massing of it down and the height of it down. And I would suggest that the retail building, that plan has not been finalized, but that would be in the same vein, the same architectural style as the residential building. So again, this would be in keeping with other projects that have been built within the Lakeway Overlay District. And in terms of circulation, one of the, one of the design guidelines in the Lakeway Overlay District is to consolidate curb cuts, have better flow and circulation throughout the interior of the site. And with the existing commercial building, that had direct access off of Route nine and like a lot of those properties along that stretch of Route nine, you pull in, they're awkward at best. So we would be getting rid of those curb cuts that were associated with that number three oh eight. And with this, you'd pull into the site, one point of access off of Route nine, consolidating curb cuts. That commercial building would have its own parking lot in front, so now it'll function internally and be more cohesive and function as one site, whereas previously, although they were as one part of one project, there was a little segmentation there. So we think that this flows much better. We did a turning template radius for emergency vehicles coming in and out. And emergency vehicles, fire engines can pull around the site and get out with one sweep. So in terms of circulation, we think this is a much better circulatory, both from access in for all of the uses as well as one point of access out onto Route nine. So other than that, I think we took a lot of what the feedback we got from the labs. I mean, we really looked hard at how can this site function better? How can we increase the commercial component to it? Which obviously the best spot for the commercial is, so you have better visibility from Route nine. You're closer to Route nine. That seemed like the ideal spot than trying to use where the existing building was. It's just, it's too narrow. It just didn't work. So we think this is better functioning. I think we have a better retail component to it. We've expanded that significantly. And then in terms of parking, even with when we had two twenty-four unit buildings and the updated commercial building, we still have enough parking. With that said, we reduced the unit counts. Instead of two twenty-four unit buildings, it's two twenty unit buildings. So the parking requirement right now would be seventy-five spaces and we do, we're providing ninety-two parking spaces. So we do have plenty of overflow parking, both for, and with the different peak times for the commercial versus the residential, we believe that that would be even amplified more in the evening when the retail building wouldn't need as much. We have plenty of parking for the residential. So even though we exceed at face value with full, you know, use of both the commercial and the residential, with the off-peak demand, we think that that's even further, further magnified, so that we have plenty of parking and overflow parking. And the one last item I'd like to reiterate is we did hear the feedback from the neighborhood. They do not want people, historically, off of, I guess it's off Rolfab, people come in the back. They park back here and they use the power lines for, you know, whether it's dirt bikes or in the wintertime, snowmobiles, people use that. They're afraid that people, if there wasn't enough parking, although with this new proposal, we have more than enough parking, people might park there or try to visit and then cut through and it would just add for more people walking through and cutting through property. So we were definitely aware of that and made sure that we provided solid fence barrier along the property lines on both the west and the south. And then it was suggested that beyond having just a fence on the westerly side, that we shifted the building program as far as we could to the east because there is a power line easement there. We have to stay away from some of the easements and I believe there's a cell co-easement over there. We can't go within those easements, but we pushed the program as far as we could to the east so that we have a good landscape strip so that we could, we can provide some taller evergreens along the backyards of the people, the residential portion of the abutters who are on Gordon Road. So I just want to reiterate that we heard what you said. We heard what the abutters said and we have hopefully reflected all of that in this new proposal, so.
And if I could just add, I understand we're not asking for any waivers.
There are no waivers.
And with respect to the tenancies, there would be an equal mix of affordable housing between two two-bedroom and two one-bedroom units. And there will be no three-bedroom units in this project at all.
Okay. I guess, Julie, do you have any thoughts or comments?
I do have a couple of questions, Mr. Chair. In terms of the retail component of this, Richard, I don't know if you have any end user identified for this particular space. And I appreciate the idea of trying to cut down on the number of curb cuts. I'm just wondering if there could be some potential concern in terms of tenanting that commercial space without having direct, you'd have to drive through the residential parking to get to this commercial parking and it's very separate. You have another office or another building in between that. I just, there's another concern in my mind of the potential of having people inadvertently parking in the dentist parking lot to go into that commercial space, even if there is enough parking behind the commercial building. I'm just wondering if there is, if those are some of the things that have kind of been thought through as part of this design? How can we address that?
Well, I think, in all candor, I must say that there, this is a difficult location anyway. You know, you're on a one-way section of Route nine. You don't have a lot of maneuverability on Route nine to get in and out here. You need, you really want to keep the curb cuts down for safety reasons. And I think if we have the building out front as it is, and if it's an attractive building and we have appropriate signage, I think you'll still attract a decent tenant mix. Our idea is that it would be smaller tenancies rather than try to put like one anchor in there. And I think that fits both with the fact that we have residences there as well as the fact that it would be easier to keep tenanted. I think your comments are appropriate and I understand them, but I think we have enough parking there. I think that there can be some potentially dedicated parking in the interior for particular tenants and that would be one way to address that.
And I would also add that one thing we forgot to call.
Sir, could you just identify yourself?
Hamid Hatami. Hamid Hatami, I apologize.
No problem.
Prestige Property Development. One of the things in the plan, again, from neighborhood feedback, was the dentist office wanted to make sure there was fencing all around, to make sure that both from his side goes this way and also from our side, nobody goes to his way. So to the comment about if they would park in his lot and potentially go use the commercial space, they shouldn't be doing that because they'll be fencing, screening it off.
Right, and that's one thing I failed to point out was that that is fully fenced around the dentist's property.
And the second point I was going to bring up about the parking too is, yes, it'd be more ideal to put the parking in front of the commercial and pull the commercial building a little more off the road, drive up to it, but the bylaws in this overlay say that it needs to be rear parking. So a lot of them, you're driving by these narrow alleys around buildings, just like the existing structure that's there and also the dentist's office as well. So I think this would flow a lot better than, I guess, an alternative.
Okay, Julie, who else up?
My one other quick question. This is just from my foggy memory right now. The other commercial building that is on the corner of Gordon and Route nine, is that also owned by you? Is that correct?
No.
Okay. My apologies. Okay, never mind. No other questions right now, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Perna?
I have no questions.
Tim?
Well, it seemed like the previous plan, you know, the box was just checked to have the commercial building out front, the old apartment, hair salon. So that's done with. Now it's another commercial building, which with, we don't know what, what kind of commercial will be in there in the future. So it seems like another box is checked and this site is just being crammed in here. Doesn't seem like there's a modicum of privacy for the people on Gordon Road with the three-story building behind them. What's the community benefit here?
So one of the community benefits that we had initially proposed was tying into the trails and meeting with the trail committee, but that was shot down by the neighbors.
And as the community benefit is defined under the bylaw, it's providing that affordable housing component.
That could be one, yep. Anything else?
Well, I think as Hamid just pointed out, we had attempted or had offered to give some opening for the trail use. However, that did not work out.
If I may, Ayman Abdel-Jabbar, principal of Prestige Property Development. One of the benefits to this project is that we're taking two existing dilapidated buildings and we're completely raising them and we're eliminating two of the three curb cuts and we're pushing our commercial, our proposed commercial building closer to the frontage on Route nine, which plays off of the vision, the long-term vision for the Lakeway Common District to really revitalize that Route nine corridor. We had an option to go slightly larger or We had an option to go slightly larger or to add a second floor to the commercial building, but I think that falls in line with your comment about checking boxes. So, what we tried to do was set up a commercial building that we know we're going to be able to rent a lot easier by having three smaller tenants. In addition to that, the parking is in the back. So, we're really connecting the residential to the commercial and we're hoping that by having smaller units, we can get a good mix of tenants in there rather than just crossing our fingers and praying for a big box to come in or a franchise of some sort.
Yeah.
Yeah, if community counts the parcel itself between the residential and the commercial, there's some value there with the tenants that would come. Obviously, where it is on Route Nine, it's not a highly traversed pedestrian area. So, and nobody else from the neighborhood wanted to be able to go back and forth to this lot to take advantage of whatever it could have had.
Right, and I know it's subjective, but do you really think this is going to increase pedestrian and bicycle traffic with this?
No, only within the site.
Not out onto Route Nine to other businesses?
I don't know that, I don't know that that is a truly beneficial attribute to any development down there.
I thought it was one of the, one of the development regulations and goals of the Lakeway District.
It is. It's one of them, yes.
Okay.
We have a beautiful signalized crosswalk not too far away from this proposed project, which leads right across to Marketplace, which as we all know is looking really nice these days and it's very vibrant and we would hope that our tenants would support those small businesses across the street.
Okay. And as far as the floor area ratio, the fire for the property, were the calculations somewhere that we could see?
Yeah, I think they're on the plan.
They're on the plan, I saw that, but I don't know if there's any breakdown per floor of each building and then the commercial building as well, if those calcs were there. I may have missed them.
John?
No, in the, in the horizontal mixed use, there is no criteria for, on the vertical mixed use, there is a breakdown of the square footage of the retail or commercial versus the residential in one building. On the horizontal, within zoning, there is no criteria for square footages or percentages.
If that's the case, I stand corrected. I thought the fire still applied, but okay.
No, just in the vertical.
Does that sound right, Chris?
It does. I'll double check on the floor area ratio, but the representation of the retail versus the residential ratio for, is correct. That's only for the, under the existing bylaw, it's only for the vertical mixed use. Currently, our horizontal mixed use does not require a ratio of commercial to residential.
Got it, okay.
I'd also point out there's thirty-nine percent open space as opposed to what would be required as fifteen percent. Lot coverage is at twenty-one point six percent as opposed to fifty percent. So, in other regards, I think there is some sort of benefit.
I don't have any further questions.
Okay. John, can you tell me, based on this plan going from forty-eight to forty and eliminating the two existing structures, commercial structures, what has that done in terms of reduction of the impervious?
I believe it's a wash, if anything, it might be a little bit less for total impervious areas. So, in terms of any modifications for the drainage, everything was subsurface and where we had some of the subsurface recharge located, we'd have to, you know, jockey that around, but it's pretty much a wash.
Okay. I think it's a little dense, but I think it is a big improvement. I'd like to see more in terms of the elevations, you know. I think that the town and the Commonwealth need more housing. If I were inclined to, when I said dense, I mean like there's probably too many units, but I don't think it's that much of a reach, in my opinion. I think you're going to struggle with the commercial space. I sense that Prestige Builder may be the biggest tenant in the commercial space, but that's okay.
We hope not.
We hope not.
But I think it's a tough commercial site. You're going to have to work probably with MassDOT on some of these curb cuts, but...
If I could just jump in for a second?
Yeah.
And to take what you're saying a step further, this stretch of Route Nine is a struggle for retail. And when we discussed the retail-commercial component of this, they knew that it was going to be a struggle, which they were saying, geez, in terms of their business, to try to maintain the existing hair salon property and put some lipstick on it and dress it up, they said, we can, we can make that work, you know, financially, knowing that a retail was going to be, you know, to build something new, obviously, it's more of an expense, it's a bigger building, it's, so, business model wise, that's why initially they went in with trying to rehab the existing as opposed to going with new commercial. So, I just want to put that out, so...
I get it, but again, and I get out, maxing the units, I understand the business model, but again...
And I see the other side.
This votes, you know.
Right, and I see the other side. I just...
I get it.
My point is they weren't kind of trying to skirt around it. They said, hey, what can we try to do with what we got?
Positive, I hate this a lot less than I hate what you came in with the first...
All right, I'll take that as a win.
That's, I hate it a lot less and I kind of see it in my mind, you know, understanding like if you take a few more, if you took a few more units, maybe reduce this, in ma again, a one person, reduce the size of the buildings to like eighteen units, gotten rid of some of the impervious and understood that, I don't, as a condition, again, I'm just one person, as a condition that you're not getting OCs on the apartments until, at the very least, the shell of the commercial building is up and the DHCD has approved the affordable units.
And we did reach out to our 40B consultant that we've worked with quite a bit and to confirm, she deals with DHCD and REA go out there and we ran that by her on terms of the affordable component. And we said, yeah, we're going to, fifty percent two-bedroom, fifty percent one-bedroom. She says, yeah, that's common. So, I just want to point that out that we did do some homework on that as well.
Good.
We also did a comparison percentage-wise with other like projects in town that had been approved and the percentage-wise, commercial space versus apartment space and land area versus the build-out, it's really very comparable. And if you wanted to get into the specifics, we can give you that.
Okay, this isn't going to close tonight? So, you may want to get in the specifics. I don't know whether subsequent events are going to moot your filing, but...
Well, I know what your next topic is this evening and as you, as you know, there should be some concern on our part about the viability in light of what is driving a train down the road here, so...
But I think, you know, from your standpoint, you got to proceed like it's going to get shot down.
That's correct.
Yeah. Okay.
But thank you for the time, in light of that, in light of what you're dealing with next.
Do I have any input from the public? Sir, could you please identify yourself and...
Mark Maggiore from Nineteen Goin' Road. I'm hoping that they will stay for the next agenda because this project was a major component of why that's happened. So, I hope you guys stay and listen. I am with you, Stephen. I'm kind of less mad about this plan. I'm a little, I'm okay with it, but since I saw the traffic study, I kind of want to gear towards that because there hasn't been mentioned about the traffic study at all. The first question was, is...
Just in terms of traffic, just give you a little landscape?
Yep.
I think these guys, because it was so negatively perceived two meetings ago, these guys wanted, I probably shouldn't use this word, come back with a beauty pageant as to what we may entertain. If, there's no way that this public hearing is closing tonight. So, if you want to talk about traffic, go ahead.
I want to talk.
Okay, you talk about traffic, but I'm not sure that, I'm not sure that their traffic engineer is here tonight.
That's, that's fine, that's fine.
Okay, I just want you to be calm. You're not closing tonight.
Oh, no, no, I know.
Okay.
So, I want to go on the first question that the chair asked about the commercial building. What exactly is the address going to be for that building? Because...
That's something that the assessor would have to negotiate with us basically, but only after and during the building permit process. So, we can't give an answer to that.
Okay, because the reason, because the building is on three-twelve and then the entrance is on three-oh-eight.
But Attorney Ricker is right about that. The assessor would assign...
Yes, okay. The only reason why I say that is because if you plug that into, if there's businesses in there and they're looking for a three-twelve and, you know, they're going to look, the GPS is going to hit the three-twelve and not three-oh-eight.
Understood.
Understood. And then also with the sign, you have a sign at the driveway there? So, I don't know what the bylaws tells you about the sign, how the height is of the entrance, but I know the business before is iCar and that's facing, you know, facing forward and then you have the dentist. So, how are you going to set yourself apart from those two signs?
If I could, I think that again is something that we need to develop. I think, as the chair pointed out, I mean, we wanted to go forward tonight to at least demonstrate that these gentlemen listened last time that they were here and understood that what they presented was clearly not acceptable. And I think that they've come a long way. I frankly think they've come a very long way to address and to attempt to address all of the questions that were raised in the last meeting that we had. I wasn't here for it, but as I said, I did watch it. So, I think the signage and the design of the signs and the size of the signs are something that not only building code will dictate, but also as we get further into this process would be addressed further.
In the traffic study, it's based off of two thousand twenty-two MassDOT. And it is written on page seven, bottom of the page, "Subern traffic along Boston Turnpike has not increased since two thousand twenty-two. The afternoon peak hours traffic associated with the proposed development is expected to increase to the Boston Turnpike traffic no more than one point five percent." So, in two thousand twenty-two, we were just getting out of the pandemic. Marketplace, a lot of the tenants weren't there and I can tell you Route Nine and those hours were not what they are in two thousand twenty-five, they had twenty twenty-five. So, depending on where this data was in early two thousand twenty-two versus late two thousand twenty-two, you're going to see a big, a big increase in traffic. I know because I get off that neighborhood and the traffic has increased a lot. So, I kind of take the traffic study with a grain of salt for that study. I would like to see the DOT have another study of what it is now. I might not be sure we're going to get it, but I just don't think that based, getting this traffic study here and using this is going to be, tells the whole story of how people are going to be entering and entering exit that, that spot. In the traffic study, they mentioned the Maple Light, Maple Ave Light. It's hard to explain because you guys don't have, you guys have this map versus something on the screen, but the way I am on Gordon Road, so most of the people that live on Failon, right, when they want to travel east to Route Nine, they basically all come down Gordon Road and take a right. Almost the whole neighborhood does that because they don't want to bother with you if the light's behind, so they want to do that. There's a traffic light here and when that's red, that's when Maple Light, Maple Ave Light turns to the left-hand turn. That light is kind of finicky depending on how many cars there are and ever since the Marketplace has been more studier, there's more cars coming and trying to take a left on Route Nine. But you only got about three or four car cycle and they either go not Route Nine east or they go down to our neighborhood Failon. So, you have, you might have a car taking a Route Nine this way, you might have a car coming out of Maple Ave trying to get into this onto Gordon Road or they're going to take Route Nine. They're, they're, they're right here, they're going to be waiting right here. You're only going to have a certain amount of time to get in and out of there before the green light here comes along and you're going to wait and wait and wait and wait until you get your turn. When you have business there and you have all the residents there, how many spots there? Let me tell you, you are jockeying trust to get out of the neighborhood. It, there's nothing that tells you in this, in this traffic study, and I've been doing that for over thirty-five years. I've been getting out of that neighborhood for thirty-five years and I've seen a lot of traffic patterns over the years. I just think that you're going to have a hard time and that Triway is so close to Gordon Road, whereas from Gordon Road to Tatum Road to Gleason Road, we at least have a little bit of space because if I'm getting off of Gleason Road a couple of streets over trying to get onto Route Nine West, I have to fight Papa's hardware store or Trippy's customers to get out onto Route Nine. So, I have maybe like two or three cars just to get into the left lane and if I miss that and I hit the light cycle, I'll wait another five minutes. And that's exactly what that's going to happen over here. It's going to even be worse. And then I saw the speed limit between forty, forty-five. Once they go up that hill, they sell. So, you're going to, you're going to create a lot more traffic in that spot, a lot. I think the traffic study needs to be addressed a lot more than they are addressing it.
I assure you, sir, if these gentlemen come out of town meeting alive, we will have a public hearing dedicated in large part to traffic and you'll get...
I am also a town meeting member. So, just keep that in mind.
Well, I don't want that to be construed as a threat.
No, 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 it's not a threat, but I'm just saying like, I think, I think they know that the public is, you know, you guys are really trying to squeeze.
I've been to town, I've been to town meetings and I've watched them and the outcomes sometimes are how they arrived at certain things are a mystery and I could never predicted what would occur. So, you never know, but I respect your opinion and thank you, thank you for participating. So you never know. But I, I respect your opinion and thank, thank you. Thank you for participating. Is that it?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you for participating. Anyone else? Kathleen?
Yeah, I'm Kathleen Cohane, 29 Gleason Road. I want to point out that this project affects more than just the abudders on Gordon Road. That it does affect the whole Failon, well, the Failon neighborhood. One thing, I'll leave my traffic comments for later. But one of the things I'm concerned about is the landscaping on the west, the west side. There's a 10-foot, 10-foot thing there. And when you get to snow storage, I think we're going to have a problem because I don't know where the snow is going to go if it's not going to go into that 10-foot strip and kill all of it that's there. So if that could be widened and if some of the existing trees could stay there, that would be nice rather than just some abavidas that are going to get damaged by salt and snow. And like I said, the traffic comments I have, I'll leave for later. Thank you.
Thank you, Kathleen. Anyone else have any comments I wish to be heard? Mr. Kirk?
Chris Kirk, 40 Westwood Road. Just two questions. One is, have the proponents approached like Mass DOT for an acceleration, deceleration lane in front of their property? Just to make life a little easier?
I don't think they control the, the entirety of the frontage, but I would leave that to, because of the dentist's office, I, I'd leave that question for Mr. Grenier to answer.
And that'll be dictated by DOT. We'll, i- i- if this process, you know, moves forward, when we're typically DOT does not want you to apply for anything until you have a permit just because from their point of view, they don't want to be flooded with a plan and it changes and then they get inundated with different variations of plans. When that time comes, we would make a curb cut application to DOT. And then based on that DOT dictates what they need for whether it's D cell lanes, X cell lanes. It, it's all on what DOT deems appropriate for that project.
Thank you. And the other question is, there was trouble at the Rolfe Avenue Pumping Station a while back? And I was wondering if anybody has done any calculations on the amount of wastewater that might be discharged by this project, whether it might contribute to difficulties that already exist apparently.
When we do the calculations for wastewater per bedroom, they go off of what Title V would have for, for maximum flow, which is 110 gallons a day per bedroom. And with, with this, it would be, it's a total of 40 units, half room, two bedroom, half room, one bedroom. So you have a 120 bedrooms times 110 gallons a day per, per bedroom, which is a very conservative number. But when we go in for, you know, your permits, that's if you base it off of his, his, his Title V calculations for, for flows.
So you're, you're satisfied that it wouldn't, it wouldn't overlook what's already causing problems?
That, we'd have a, a permit that goes into the DPW and the sewer department for them to review. No one has made a comment that, that would pose a problem to that station that we've heard. And when we submit these applications into the town, it gets distributed to all different departments for their review and comment. We haven't received any comments from the DPW or sewer department that raised any, any concerns or red flags regarding flow from this project.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments of the applicant?
Oh goodness.
From the public? No other questions or comments? Then I guess I would entertain a motion to continue the public hearing on the proposed mixed-use development site plan approval and special permit 308 and 312 Boston Turnpike until Thursday, December 4th, 2025 at 7:00 PM. Do I have the motion?
I move that the proposed mixed-use development site plan approval and special permit for 308, 312 Boston Turnpike be continued to December 4th, 2025 Planning Board Meeting.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Ms. Holstrom?
Yes.
Herna?
Yes.
Tim?
Yes.
And I'm in favor as well.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. Next on our list, we have proposed zoning bylaw changes for our special town meeting on December 17th of this year. Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So we have one article before the board for recommendation. At the end of this meeting, I will ask that the board continue as is our tradition to the next meeting, which would be December 4th, to hold two public hearings on the article prior to a formal recommendation. Although I am, you know, happy to take feedback and questions this evening related to the article. So the article proposed is for a temporary mixed-use moratorium in relation to the Lakeway Overlay District and the Route 20 Overlay District. So what this functionally would do, would ask for a prohibition on the use of mixed-use provisions in those overlays for a period of 24 months if approved at town meeting. There's a memo that provides some additional background and context was provided to the board members. In terms of the intent of it, primarily, we are seeking to review both infrastructure and the land use regulations in relation to current community needs. So this would allow us in that 24-year, 24-month period to evaluate both infrastructure and our current regulations in relation to a number of studies that are ongoing. Most notably, our master plan update as well as the economic corridor study and any other infrastructure evaluations that we would want to do to make sure that we are utilizing our limited capacity in relation to new development as we see it come down the pipeline. So we feel that the, the existing zoning has been successful in spurring new development. But there is concern in terms of the, this rate at which development has been occurring. And so we've been asked to place this article before town meeting, so.
I'm sorry, Chris, I, I had a legal notice.
Sorry. I jumped right into it.
Sorry, I forgot to read it.
Didn't want to interrupt you. Is it too late?
Nope, go ahead.
In accordance with the provisions of Mass General Laws, Chapter 48, Section 5, the Shrewsbury Planning Board will hold a public hearing on Thursday, November 6th, 2025 at 7:00 PM in the Select Board's Hearing Room at the Richard D. Carney Municipal Office Building, 100 Maple Avenue, regarding proposed amendments to the Shrewsbury zoning bylaw as follows. Article to be determined to see if the town will vote to amend the zoning bylaw of the Town of Shrewsbury relative to Section 7M of the zoning bylaw entitled, quote, "Lakeway Overlay District," end quote, by inserting a new first paragraph before subsection, quote, "One therein for the purposes of establishing a temporary moratorium on vertical and horizontal mixed use as an allowable use in the Lakeway Overlay zoning district." And amend Section 7N of the zoning bylaw entitled, quote, "Route 20 Overlay District," end quote, by inserting a new first paragraph before subsection, quote, "One therein for the purposes of establishing a temporary moratorium on vertical and horizontal mixed use as an allowable use in the Route 20 Overlay zoning district" or to take any other action in relation thereto.
Sorry about missing that, Tim?
No, no, I should have spoke up.
No. Okay, so Chris just told us this and I guess I would open it up to, to board members. Ms. Holstrom, do you have any thoughts on this?
I do. And I apologize. I, my voice sounds a bit hoarse and so I, I'm sorry if it comes off as a bit muddled or, or yelly. I, I do appreciate the intent behind this article. And I, I share the goal of trying to ensure that future development aligns with our current objectives and long-term planning priorities in, in the town. And I wholeheartedly agree with the need to revisit and update some of our zoning provisions. That is absolutely timely, absolutely appropriate. Our community has evolved since those zoning regulations were initially adopted. It only makes sense to go back and revisit them and, and bring them up to where we are today. I do have some concerns about the potential unintended consequences of, of a moratorium like this, particularly its impact on the, on the limited areas in Shrewsbury that are currently today experiencing commercial development activity. And while I think the moratorium's designed to create space for, for thoughtful planning, I think that there is a potential, a real potential of it having a chilling effect on investment interest, especially in today's uncertain economic times and the environment by which we're, we're operating. We, a- as a community, I think, run a real risk that developers and end users may not simply wait out this, this moratorium, but instead redirect their projects elsewhere. And that will ultimately end up in a longer-term loss of momentum for, for our community. I, I think that the planning updates can be completed within the timeframe that has been kind of outlined to us. I think the successful implementation of some of these necessary infrastructure improvements is a much longer process. I think we all need to just accept that that is a longer process. It requires significant resources, significant coordination. And without realistic ways for immediately addressing those infrastructure needs, the, the moratorium period's going to expire without us having achieved some of those intended outcomes. So I just, I have some, excuse me, general concerns about it. And I, I'd like to, I, I'd like to hope that perhaps there's a way, instead of saying no to this language, perhaps there's some way of looking at some alternatives of modifying how we're, we're doing this. Perhaps there's, you know, potential of looking at, you know, developments coming forward and entering into development agreements that tie projects, tie project approvals to certain commitments to infrastructure needs or other community benefits. I think those would help kind of target development and, and keep development appropriate with what the town's priorities are. But I, and those are just some of my initial thoughts. It's, it's a shame that this is coming, it feels like this is coming quite quickly. And we are really, we have this hearing and the December hearing to, to fully kind of vet this. I feel like it kind of popped up quickly and we're all kind of just reacting to it quickly. And I, I don't think that this is something that we can react to quickly. I think it needs to be a little, a little bit more thought out.
I share Ms. Holstrom's concerns that it is coming pretty quickly. It definitely might have some unintended consequences. But it, it's something that we need to kind of revisit what happened in the last 10, 15, 20 years and reevaluate and adjust the, the overlay requirements accordingly. One of the questions I have is during, again, if it passes and du- during this moratorium within this overlay district, they can't do anything or the underlying zoning is what dictates what can be done in the interim?
Correct. So the underlying zoning would remain intact. The overlay districts could be used to the extent that mixed-use zoning would not be permitted. But any other, the design guidelines and, and those would still be intact and, and be able to be utilized. But mixed-use would not be a viable option during that 24-month period.
Herna, any other questions? Jim?
Really well said, Julie. I echo Julie's statements. I think that the concern really, and this did come up quickly. But it, you know, having been around these meetings a little bit, I think that the, the feeling in the town is that growth has outpaced municipal infrastructure as, as Mr. McColdrick pointed out in his, in his memorandum here. And everybody's concerned about water, sore, electric, traffic, safety. And without amendments in, in about two decades to the bylaw, it seems like the development that has occurred is, is by right, using the bylaw as, as a guide, as they should for these types of projects that, that seem to exasperate the, the town's ability to, to keep pace with everything else that goes along with it. So it's probably a good idea to pause and take a closer look at it. But I think the important thing would be that if it does happen and if it is voted on at town meeting, that something substantial comes out of it that hopefully the majority can, can agree upon, that's a good, a good idea and good policy for the town of Shrewsbury.
You also?
Yes.
To be honest, I, I kind of share Ms. Holstrom's concerns. I, I don't like it and I'll tell you why I don't like it. I, I think that of the mixed-use projects that we've had, the first being Lakeway Commons, that was a project that was kind of directed by the developer in the town working cooperatively to amend the existing Lakeway bylaw that this, this board initially crafted, but then Mr. Grossman and his team came in and said, this will work. And we did it and it did work and I think it's a good project. So that was the first one. The second mixed-use project, which is not implicated by this moratorium, was the Edgemere Commons. That was a derelict property. My office actually did the permitting of that project. That wasn't something that was done by hand-in-hand with the developer in the town, but I think it has produced a, a positive benefit for that corridor. I know there's apartments, I hear complaints about apartments, but I think most of the complaints about the apartments are directed at the 40Bs that we're facing. The next one was a project that Mr. Grenier did, another derelict property behind the Walgreens. And I actually liked that project. So that was what, 15 units? And I, and I think it came out pretty, pretty well, Polar Views. So you, you had some multifamily, but the multifamily brought some commercial and it also kind of rehabilitated properties that were probably beyond derelict. The next one that was approved but not yet built, and I, I didn't see anything in the moratorium, was the Town Center. And that's the Beal School. That was approved. It hasn't been built, the permit hasn't been pulled. And again, I think that is a pretty good project. So there's four projects in town that... So there's four projects in town that are mixed-use, and all of them allowable by special permit. And I think if you've come to any of these meetings, you see that this board doesn't, we, we had two special permits today, applications. This board does not hand out special permits like candy. We, we go through the bylaws, we, we take a better input, and I think to take away, to impose a moratorium is, is kind of taking away our discretion to look at projects and to evaluate projects. And kind of reminds me, again, I've been on the board the longest, when we had that hotel at the corner of Lake Street and Route 9, that produced a, a certain level of hysteria, where there was a zoning amendment, and they took away from the planning board the ability to approve hotels by special permit, I believe, and I think it vested in the, it, it vested in the Zoning Board of Appeals. So I don't, I don't think you can, you know, legislate by emotion changes to the zoning bylaw. I'm not saying that certain changes to the zoning bylaw aren't needed, but I, I, again, I, I think this thing is on the tracks and it, it is coming down quickly. You know, maybe town meeting will approve it, but I, again, not only unintended consequences, I think you're taking away our discretion, and I think that particularly the Lakeway Common bylaw is actually a pretty good bylaw after Mr. Grossman tweaked it. I think the Town Center bylaw is a pretty good bylaw. Route 20, we haven't had a Route 20 project, so we've never approved a Route 20 overlay mixed-use project, to my knowledge. So I can't tell you whether it's a good project or not, but again, I, I think you're kind of handcuffing us, but, but if that's the will of town meeting, so be it. And those are my thoughts. Public hearing. Any members of the audience have any comments, questions? Mr. Kirk?
Yeah, Chris Kirk, 40 West Road. First of all, what's the legal basis of the moratorium, either in state statute or regulation?
Legal basis? I'm not the proponent, but like, the legal basis is this is a zoning amendment. So if, if the amendment passed by town meetings by two-thirds, it would have the effect of probably killing Prestige Builders Project, the 308 Boston Turnpike. It would also put a hold on any other projects, not the, not the project on Green Street, which is an MBTA Communities project, or the pending 40Bs on Chestnut Street and North Queen Sigamond Avenue. So it would have the effect of essentially killing one project, a small project.
So this is just basically a, a change in the zoning bylaws?
Correct.
Okay. And second question is, i- if it's, if, one of the purposes of this moratorium is, is to make changes to the zoning bylaws, why do changes in zoning bylaws require a moratorium?
No, that's just a component of the zoning bylaw.
That is the change.
Yeah, that is.
That's, that, that, that is the only change? I mean, there's no, there's nothing, I was...
So, so maybe to clarify, so the, the proposal for the moratorium is in itself a zoning bylaw change? So the request is to add language to the zoning bylaw, which is essentially for a period of 24 months would nullify the sections that allow for vertical and horizontal mixed use in the Lakeway Overlay and the Route 20 Overlay districts?
Okay. What I, what I've been hearing is that the 24-month moratorium was for the purpose of studying changes to regulations and bylaws and such, but not just the moratorium itself?
So that's correct. That's the stated intent of the moratorium, is to pause the use of those for a period of 24 months. The intent of that is to study infrastructure and land use policy during that time period.
So you couldn't study without the moratorium?
Oh, you could, but...
I'm, that's what, that's what they want. Okay. I'm, I'm just trying to figure out what the motives of people are.
Yeah, no, I just, that, that, that is the, that is the, apparently, the intention behind the bylaw.
Okay. The, the two, just a couple of other ones, real quick, and that is, how close are we to satisfying the, the minimum number of, of affordable units in town? Are we 8%? 9%? 7%? You know?
Uh, we're, so we're currently at a little over 7% with the 40Bs that are currently before the Zoning Board of Appeals. If they are both approved, we will achieve 10%.
Okay. So, and the last question is regarding infrastructure. I remember years ago, residential water use was restricted so that there'd be sufficient water use for commercial development, and I'm just wondering, we, we've, we've had a lot of residential development, Edgemere and, and Lakeway Commons and so forth, and I'm wondering, where are they getting their water? Because the rest of us aren't allowed to even water our lawns, so...
Sewer's the more of the issue than the water.
Sewer?
I'll let Chris speak.
Correct. A lot of the limiting factors on, on new development is the sewer, both capacity and the consent order, which prohibits extension of existing sewer infrastructure. In terms of water capacity, there is sufficient capacity for, for very significant development, but still a limited resource. Again, that's the, the intent is to study those capacities and in relation to other infrastructure as well during this 24-month period.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other questions, comments from the public? Selectmen, Richards?
Select board member.
Select board member. Sorry.
Yeah, Greg Richards, 16 Hickory Drive. Just a, just a couple of comments, just clarification, because I know many of the board commented that this seemed rushed, or I don't think it's a surprise to the board, I don't think it's a surprise to the residents of Shrewsbury, because, you know, not just, let's say, over the last, you know, 30, 60 days, I mean, there's been years now that I think a lot of residents feedback on the pace of development in the community. So I don't know why it's surprising to this board that this type of thing would be, let's say, brought up, or that the public would be supportive of this type of discussion, at least as, as part of a, a moratorium. And I just wanted to kind of, to clarify that, because I think the reason this has been discussed, the reason why the town meeting has been set up is specifically to address a key concern from the public. As we mentioned, there is, we're making our way towards a 10% affordability on, with 40Bs to be in safe harbor, and then we had two other areas, because I also believe, just as a clarification question, that 525 Hartford Turnpike would be in the Route 20 Overlay District as well, as a project, correct?
There, there's not been anything filed for 525.
But that was in discussions.
Okay. I haven't had a project.
Okay. All right. So there is more than just one, as you mentioned, of potentially impacted by the moratorium as well throughout the community. So I just think it's something that we should be discussing, you know, I think it's something that the, the public has been asking for, and I think it's a, a valid use of, of, you know, going into a town meeting to allow the town meeting to make the decision on how, you know, we as a collective community, not just this board, wants to look at how we're using, you know, the land throughout Shrewsbury and what remains. So that's my only comment. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions or comments? No other questions or comments? I would continue the public hearing on the zoning article for the temporary, temporary moratorium as affects the Lakeway Overlay and Route 20 Overlay districts until Thursday, December 4th at 7:00 PM. Ms. Holstrom?
Sorry, did you miss out on...
I have to have a motion. Sorry. Is there a motion to that effect? Perna, is there a motion?
Yeah. I move that the proposed zoning bylaw changes be continued to December 4th town meeting.
Second?
All in favor, Ms. Holstrom?
Yes.
Perna?
Yes.
Yes.
And I'm in favor as well. Thank you. Good night. New business?
So we have one item of new business, it's to discuss and vote on the release of the technical review fee for one Abbey Lane site plan modification. The board will recall, this was for a deck on that project. The technical review fees no longer serve a purpose, but we do need a vote in order to return those. We did collect them, so...
Is this the one down off Lake Street?
Correct, Abbey Lane. So it's a over 55 development, but being controlled by the, as an entire site, the one deck did trigger a modification.
So are the HOA generally happy with what's transpired down there now?
I can't speak for them, but we haven't received any complaints.
Okay. Then I guess at this point, I would entertain a motion to release the technical review fee for one Abbey Lane site plan modification.
I move that we release the technical review fee for one Abbey Lane site plan modification.
Second?
All in favor, Ms. Holstrom?
Yes.
Perna?
Yes.
Tim?
Yes.
And I'm in favor as well. Okay. So we're gonna do A and Rs next?
Correct.
Okay. 26 High Street.
Yes, so 26 High Street, what I'll say is, so all the, all the A and Rs that are provided do show access and frontage, which is the two criteria for the board to consider an endorsement of them. See no issue with endorsing either 26 High Street or 70 Cherry Street. I will note that 211R Prospect Street, the board may wish to hold that until executive session for actual endorsement, but other than that, I believe the plans have been provided and are, in our understanding entitled to endorsement.
Does lot shape factor come into play here?
It, it does to some extent, so the A and R process does not require compliance with zoning. It only requires compliance with access and frontage. If a non-conforming lot is created, it and the lot that is affected by it are both rendered non-conforming and would require relief prior to building.
Okay, so as far as we're concerned, and, as far as I'm concerned, I shouldn't be worried or concerned about lot shape factor. I'm looking at this.
Correct. No, I haven't been reviewed for that.
Fair enough. Okay.
Okay, so we're gonna, at this point, we're gonna authorize the endorsement of this Cherry Street and High Street properties. We're gonna sign after the, sign after the conclusion of the executive session. I'm probably gonna recuse myself from 211 Prospect Street.
Understood. So we have one letter that was received, or sorry, email that was received in relation to the November 3rd meeting. I responded to that email just late this afternoon as well, and provided that to the board for your consideration. Essentially, it was in relation to the proposed zoning bylaw change and moratorium, clarifying that the MBTA zoning would not be affected by this proposal.
Yeah. I saw Chris's response to Louise's. It made sense, yeah?
Okay. At this point, I, I'm gonna recuse myself, but I'm just gonna, we're gonna go into executive session. But the next order of business is to enter into executive session pursuant to Mass General Laws, Chapter 38, Section 21, Little A3, "For the purposes of discussing strategy with respect to ongoing litigation, which discussion, if held in an open meeting, would have a detrimental effect on the litigating position of the planning board. As this is the last item of on our, on our agenda this evening, we will not reconvene in open meeting at the conclusion of executive session. For this action, I require a majority vote of the members. This is required to be a roll call vote. I think even though I'm accusing myself, I can still vote." So I would entertain a motion to go in executive session.
I move that we go into an executive session.
Do I have a second? Okay. Ms. Holstrom, are you in favor?
Yes.
Perna, are you in favor?
Yes.
Tim, are you in favor? And I'm in favor as well. And just make sure that we're all...